Good afternoon. I am going to call this regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, July 24, 2019, to order. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of this committee. With me at the dais are council members Palmisano, Goodman, Schrader, Council President Binder, Council Member Fletcher, Conno, and Gordon. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. So, we have four items on today's agenda. And we will begin with item number one, which is an update of the city's Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan. And that presentation will be introduced by Ms. Joy Marsh Stevens from the Division of Racial Equity.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan started as an idea, a shared value that Deputy City Coordinator Andrea Larson and I saw in aligning the city's traditional strategic planning process and the new charge from this body to develop a racial equity action plan. In response to the needs of this body in the mayor's office, we devised a process by which we would have a single plan that included measurable goals with clear metrics by which departments could set priorities and align their work. The Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan was to serve as a compass informed by racially disaggregated data and ensuring that our actions towards the goals would result in focused, measurable impact within a three-year period. It is a vision that you and the mayor embraced and one that enables us to build upon significant engagement the city has done over the years. It serves as a vehicle to elevate and propel bold work informed by, excuse me, constituents across our internal operations and out into the community. This process would challenge us to use new ways of thinking and planning our work centering racial equity to ensure that the metrics we use to measure progress effectively tell us where we are reducing disparities. This final chapter of the SREEP, as it's fondly referred to, that we'll be asking you to approve today realizes this vision that you championed and the clear commitment to addressing racial disparities that residents in and around the region look to Minneapolis to do. Before we dig into the core of the presentation, I want to acknowledge that I'm joined here today by several members of my team. And I want to specifically note three of them. Larice Reed, who was really instrumental in the early stages of this planning effort in getting our operational statements and our first chapter of the SREEP complete, which this body adopted back in December 2018. In today's presentation, we'll get a brief update on two of those policy areas. I also want to acknowledge Nick Campbell and Melanie Plusinski, who've taken on the lion's share of this work this year, along with department process owners, many of whom you'll hear from today, to complete the final chapter that we will present. Their leadership that they provided in community engagement and department-level support for housing, public safety, and economic development has been invaluable. The process owners for these policy areas will share their work today. And as you did for the first chapter, we will ask you to take action in adopting the strategic needs that they share. Adopting the strategic needs for public safety, housing, and economic development will result in finalizing the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan. So as a reminder, back in December 2018, this body adopted four operational priority area strategic needs around workforce, spend, data, and community engagement. Today, as I mentioned, we'll have an update on two of these, specifically looking at the spend diversity area, because that's an area where we have existing processes. And the work of the SREEP implementation is really about how we're enhancing an existing process. The other area that you'll hear from today is on the data, the racially disaggregated data. For this area, we needed to develop a new process. So you'll hear from the process owner for this area as well on what that work has looked like since December. The primary areas of focus today are going to be on our three external policy priorities. So what I'm sharing now are the initial draft strategic needs statements that this body provided back to staff in February of 2019, asking us to use the same process that we use for our operational priority areas. That process was referred to as the metric of urgency process or the vital few process, where again, we leverage racially disaggregated data, the voice of our community, and other key stakeholders to help us isolate and really refine our strategic need, but even beyond that, to begin developing the metrics that are necessary for us to be able to measure So before we have our process owners come up, I want to just remind everyone about what exactly is in the SREEP or the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan. There are these six components of it for each of the different policy areas. It's that strategic needs statement, that key policy issue that we've identified, set on those priorities that council has set. You'll hear from our process owners today for public safety, economic development, and housing, how those strategic needs have been refined. You'll also see the problem statement, the key lagging indicator, which helps us measure at the end of a process whether or not we've made progress, the metric of urgency, which is a leading indicator, which allows us to measure progress throughout the process, those vital few projects being what are the core two or three possibly activities that we're looking to implement as departments in order to actually meet the goal, and then lastly, the goal itself. But just wanting to remind, to reinforce, that it's the strategic needs statement that this body will adopt in the same way that you did for the operational priority areas. And the reason I'll be focused specifically on the strategic need is because we understand that as we implement this work, some of the other areas might shift. As we begin to execute some of these vital few projects, for example, we might realize that we need to make some adjustments around the metrics that we're using and how we're measuring progress. And so instead of needing to come back to this body to get approval on every single thing, we're really focusing on the strategic need. All right, sorry, one last thing. So for the final chapter, again, these three bullet points in the top. For housing, we're going to hear from Kim Keller, who's our Director of Regulatory Services. We'll hear from David Frank from Economic Development Policy Priority Area, and Sasha Cotton will represent public safety. For those updates on our operational priority areas, we'll hear from Casey Carl, who is a process owner around racially disaggregated data, and Danielle Shelton Walzek, who will talk about the diverse spend.
Good afternoon, committee members. Thank you, Joy. Before I get started, while I am here today representing the housing work, I absolutely want to acknowledge the great work of CPED, of the entire SREEP team, and the consultant in getting us to this point. So when meeting with community, there was an initial important decision that was made to shift the focus over from evictions to involuntary displacement. We did this because of mounting evidence that notices to vacate and other forms of soft displacement amount to a shadow system. This insight led to the clear strategic need of reduced involuntary displacement in rental housing for Black, Indigenous, people of color, and immigrant communities. This work has also prompted us to think critically about the unique relationship the city has with rental property owners, which you can read in the statement on the right, and how we might better utilize the rental license process to reduce involuntary displacement. And the strategic need and its rationale are both supported by a number of metrics and data points. The problem overview for this issue area has three components. The first is that Black, Indigenous, people of color, and immigrant communities experience evictions at a higher rate than white communities in Minneapolis. The number of formal evictions were particularly high in ZIP codes 55404, 55411, and 55412, corresponding to wards 4, 5, and 9. Second, evidence suggests that Black, Indigenous, people of color, and immigrant communities also experience rental displacement even before the situation reaches the formal eviction process. Analysis of calls to Home Line's tenant hotline show that they receive nearly as many calls about notices to vacate as they do around evictions, and that the year-over-year number of notice-to-vacate calls is on an upward trend. The third component to the problem overview is property maintenance. Poor-maintained units affect housing stability. The number-one reason for calls to Home Line is around repairs. And when we look at 3-1-1 data, we see that repair needs are disproportionately affecting the same ZIP codes that experience these high rates of evictions. The three indicators of success, termed these lagging indicators, have also been identified. Of them, the count and percent of eviction filings and judgments has reliable data available. The other indicators are harder to measure, though we start to get insights through the Home Line data I mentioned earlier, which provides insight into that second indicator around notices to vacate and other communication to residents. Moving on to the metrics of urgency, you'll see that we're actively recognizing the relationship between poorly maintained units, between that and displacement, and the leverage point the city and specifically Regulatory Services has with rental property owners. Our draft metrics of urgency focus on improving the lived experience of people who rent their homes. They include positive movement within the tier assignments, the number of service requests, and attendance at our rental property owner's workshop. The goal encompasses all of this information, saying that residents renting in ZIP codes 55411, 55412, and 55404 reside in safe, habitable, affordable, secure, stable, and respectful homes until they choose to leave. And finally, though still in development, the direction of our vital few project leans into this relationship with rental property owners to use the rental licensing process to minimize involuntary displacement. I'll leave you with just a quick slide on rental housing-related initiatives that are happening in addition to the SREEP work. This work is not happening in a vacuum. The projects listed here range from those that are in development to those that are being newly implemented. I've positioned our high-level policy guidance to the left, as these are the initiatives that both set our approach and hold us true to our values. Relationships, both internal and external, and staffing-related work are also critical to making gains there in the middle there. These are the spaces where we either gain or lose capacity depending on how strong we are. And finally, the right two columns are the outputs. They're the ordinances and the programs that the public sees. Thank you for your time. I will turn the presentation over to David Frank to cover the economic development area.
Thank you, Kim. Welcome, Mr. Frank. Thank you, Madam Chair, committee members. David Frank from CPED. I'm here to talk about the council-identified business ownership priority among Black, Indigenous, people of color, and immigrant communities as a priority within the city's overall racial equity agenda. And we're here today, as you know, for you to adopt the strategic need within, among others, the economic development goal area. As Kim described, within the SREEP process, we engage staff from across the economic development team, along with the city coordinator's office and civil rights, the mayor and council offices, and external partners to develop a deeper understanding of the strategic need and to identify the goals and measures to support implementation. These included robust conversations with staff and partners at facilitated retreats, gathering data from prior work in this area, including research done by the innovation team here at the city, as well as new data analysis from our small business team, the Business Technical Assistance Program, or BTAP, and more. I'll get to numbers in a moment, but some of the qualitative themes we heard in those conversations were an emphasis on the value of relationships and culture and attitude and the importance of the city demonstrating that we care about businesses owned by Black, Indigenous, people of color, and immigrants in our words and in our actions. The stakeholders involved wanted us to focus on supportive resources, and in those resources, to move beyond reacting to businesses who come and knock on our door, towards being more strategic and proactive about reaching out to businesses owned by people of color. You will see that we revised the strategic need, as you can see here, to increase the number of Minneapolis-based businesses owned by people of color and increase businesses with BIPOC, as it says here, ownership that are still in business after five years. Let me talk about that for a moment. In the revised strategic need and the supporting statement, we've explicitly called out the need to support both new businesses forming as well as the retention of businesses we already have in the city. I should point out, this is a dynamic ecosystem, and although the disparities data capture a moment in time, the reality is not static and it is not linear. As new businesses are starting, others are closing. And regionally, the growth in businesses owned by Black, Indigenous, people of color, and immigrants outpaces that of white-owned businesses. But to close the gaps in business ownership overall, we must do both. We must enable business startups to flourish, and we must provide the resources and ongoing support to keep our existing businesses owned by Black, Indigenous, people of color, and immigrants open. You'll see in our goal on the right, we have chosen to focus on the retention or survival of businesses owned by Black, Indigenous, people of color, and immigrants that we interact with. Not only is retention key for increasing overall numbers, it's also where many of the city's levers may be most effective. And it's an opportunity to demonstrate that we value the business owners, who are Black, Indigenous, people of color, and immigrants who have already taken risks as entrepreneurs, and that we are here to help them flourish. From a practical perspective, it's worth noting, we also only know about the businesses we know about and interact with directly or through our partners. I'd like to take a moment on data to acknowledge that in this area, timely and actionable data is a challenge. At a high level, the content that we have been using is informed by robust and long-range data that exists at a national and regional level and for long, multi-year periods. But for smaller geographies like the city, for instance, and for annual or even more frequent reporting, equivalent data we are not aware of. We're not aware of it existing, so we'll need to invent new things. And we also know that only a portion of all businesses are required to interact with us in any formal way, like a business license or other things. But those businesses which don't are still valued and important, and of course, can access our services. We've captured some of this sentiment with our problem statements. Improving the data we collect and understand about who are businesses owned by Black, immigrant, people of color, and Black, Indigenous, people of color, and immigrants are, as well as our program outcomes are, as well as our program outcomes, will allow us to better inform business owners about what supports we have available and allow us to do a better job tailoring the services we offer to fit their needs. And I don't have an extra slide, as Kim did, but I will tell you there are some things we're doing already in this direction. Last year, we implemented Salesforce, a customer relationship management tool, to allow improved tracking across programs, especially between business development and our small business team. And we're in the process of broadening that implementation to make the program available to more people and across more programs. With the move of the small business team to CPED earlier this year, we continue to align our work and improve our collaboration. And as you may know, we're in the process of a program review for our Business Technical Assistance Program, and we are evaluating the effectiveness and racial equity impact across our financing tools. So thank you, and I will turn it over to Sasha for public safety.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Cotton.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for having me. I am here to talk about the public safety area priority. We want to acknowledge the hard work that has gone into this from racial equity, as well as the stakeholders from across the city enterprise and other folks who helped to contribute to this. The Minneapolis Police Department was a key partner in this, and thanks to A.C. Jones for being here to sort of walk us through the process. So our strategic need was to increase the number of Black, Indigenous, and people of color ages 10 to 24 years in Minneapolis who participate in high-quality youth development programming. We focused on that high-quality youth development programming because we really see it as a prevention factor for young people and people in general being involved with violence. We recognize that thinking about youth development helps us to protect young people from a variety of negative outcomes, but particularly thinking about the issue of violence, this becomes critically important. In the process, we had stakeholders from across the enterprise, as well as some community voices that did help to participate. And particularly, our community investors seemed to be very focused on looking at the issues that related to young people and their exposure to violence, and really focusing on ways that we could prevent the violence from happening before it started. So thinking about this from a public health standpoint, we would call it primary prevention. There is significant overlap in thinking about communities that are deeply impacted by violence and parts of the city that have high concentrations of communities of color. This is information that we were able to affirm through our research and evaluation team, so we're operating with some limited data. I think it's also important to note that the Health Department did a preliminary survey on community interest around violence prevention, and the number-one piece that people reported wanting to be better addressed was youth violence and the exposure of young people to violence. So we feel like this is consistent with what we've heard communities say about what they'd like to see happen. Research suggests that there's no single issue that indicates whether or not a person will become a victim or a perpetrator of violence, but that it's really a combination of factors. And being able to focus on risk and protective factors, particularly as we talk about youth development, is really thinking about those protective factors and how we can help get out in front of the problem before it starts. So with the problem overview, the presence of protective factors can lead to substantial reductions in young people who have significant risk factors for involvement with violence. And there have been a significant gap. And this is not a gap specifically from the city, but it's a gap across the gamut at the federal, state, city, and foundation level around funding for high-quality youth development programs. Over the last 10 years, we've seen declining numbers in all kinds of youth development programs. In Minneapolis within the city, we focus on YMAP, which is the Youth Minneapolis After-School Program. It's currently funding Minneapolis Public Schools Community Education Program, Parks and Rec, Youth Line, Hennepin County Libraries, the Teen Tech Center, and Minneapolis Youth Congress. When it was created in '93, the annual allocation was $1 million. It's now down to $306,000. So we can see how that dramatic divestment could lead to outcomes related to fewer programs, fewer young people being able to access those programs that we know can lead to improved outcomes, particularly around public safety. Also, at the state level, in 2002 and 2003, in the biennium, excuse me, state after-school grants were allocated at around $11 million. Since that time, well, since 2009, actually, there have been no state after-school funding. So that means that that funding source has been completely wiped out for not only Minneapolis but across the state. So we're seeing the consequences of that with young people having a lack of proper after-school programs and activities to keep them engaged. Looking at private funders, in 2009, the two main after-school providers at the state gave $16 million. In 2008, those two same funders were only able to allocate $4 million towards after-school funding. So we can see, again, this is just to illustrate how the decrease in funding across the board has really led to fewer opportunities for young people to stay engaged. And just pivoting to my own personal note, my grandmother used to always say, "An I-don't-mine is a devil's workshop." And so you can see that sometimes in young people, having a lack of opportunity to engage in healthy programming focused on arts and sports and learning new opportunities, but primarily focusing on engaging with adults who care about them, how that's made a difference over the years and how when we don't have that, we see young people sometimes exposed to things that we don't want to see them involved with, such as violence. The key lagging indicators, what we found, are that what we want to get to is a place where more Black, Indigenous, and people of color ages 10 to 24, living in high-violence areas, are participating in high-quality, culturally-responsive youth programs that can buffer against risk factors for violence. And the cultural specificity is really important. We want to make sure that programs are culturally responsive. We're not saying that every program has to focus on culture and ethnicity, but we do want to make sure that the programs available are going to reach the communities that we're talking to. By looking at the number of programs available and the number of people participating in each of those programs, we'll be better able to ascertain the lagging indicators around that moving forward. The goal is, given that public safety policy area is goal-oriented, we want to make sure that the interest and the value is in setting better goals around increased protective factors, particularly around the population we're talking about, so young people ages 10 to 24 of color, with a focus on African-American and Indigenous populations. This goal allows for clear measurements from readily available information and would also allow us to pull information from other sources moving forward. The vital few in this is to establish a permanent, stable source of funding for supporting establishment, maintenance, and delivery of high-quality, culturally-responsive youth development programming. Again, this would cut across a variety of jurisdictions and would really have the city looking to partner across the board with lots of different stakeholders to increase those investments. And also is to implement a system for monitoring and reporting the existence of and participation in programs in Minneapolis by neighborhood. So right now, we're not able to capture how many young people are actually participating in the wide range of programs. We can capture the programs that the city funds, but we're not able to capture that information across the board to get a better snapshot of what young people are experiencing on a day-to-day basis around programming. So we'd like to be able to measure that and know whether or not those programs are high quality and what the outcomes are that young people are experiencing. And with that, I would close, and I will turn it back over to Joy. To Casey.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cotton, and welcome, Mr. Carl.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Very quickly, the three strategic priority goals that have just been outlined are also affected by what I refer to, Joy, I'm sorry to introduce a new concept, enterprise stripes. So the three things that you've already adopted, which include the use of data and enterprise spend, are touching upon not just these three strategic areas, these focus areas, but everything that the city's doing, so bringing that lens of strategic focus and racial equity into the day-to-day operations. And one of those issues that I'm speaking to is the use of racially disaggregated data in how the city's policy work is done. So this need speaks to using racially disaggregated data for decision-making in the council's legislative process. It's already been adopted. What I really wanted to focus on in the respect of your time is where we are right now on this. So as you can see on this slide, the clerk's office, working very closely with our racial equity partners, have put together a timeline on how to operationalize that goal. One of our priorities is to make sure that all of the RCAs that are coming forward through the committee process have a filtering system in place that require departments to spend time looking at the recommendations they're bringing forward and to think strategically about the racial equity lens. So as you can see here, we've got a timeline that says by the end of 2020, we hope to have not only a tool in place in partnership with the RCA that comes forward to all of the committees that would allow us to stop and check what was the recommendation and has there been a consideration of the racial equity lens. It would also allow us, through Race Equity and clerk working together, to report to you how successful that process has been on a regular basis in terms of are the items that we, the staff, bringing forward, going through that filter process, are we considering that? And to that end, Race Equity has done some comparative research, looking at how similar assessments are done in partner jurisdictions or comparable jurisdictions. We've received some technical assistance from the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, of which we are a proud member. We've looked at other communities mentioned, such as the cities of Madison, Seattle, also Multnomah County. We've talked about using the Legislative Information Management System so that we can automate that tool available to all departments as they submit their requests for committee actions. And then we're trying to determine thresholds, working in partnership, not only with Race Equity Division, but all departments, what is that impact level, where a race equity impact analysis needs to be done every time, and where are there discretionary periods where there might be actions that don't need that item to come forward. So similar to a fiscal impact analysis that's done on budgetary requests, this would put that racial equity impact analysis in place. We are going to consider a variety of implementation approaches, which would include piloting the assessment with a department on a project, utilizing this with specific RCA file types, and then partnering with departments on utilizing that assessment and rolling out training on how to make sure it's consistently utilized. That finishes my presentation, and I will turn it to Danielle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carl.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Maybe I wish it was morning. Good afternoon. As was explained, my goal today is just to provide you a very brief update on some of the work of the Supplier Diversity Work Group since your adoption of the strategic need many months ago. So the Supplier Diversity Work Group has focused its efforts in two distinct categories. The first is goal-setting, and the second is supporting goals through the creation of tools. So earlier this year, we worked with our partner, Greater MSP, through the support of the mayor's office, to establish standardized industry classifications for our active vendor list. Why? To establish historical spend at the department level in order to create a baseline for establishing achievable, future, departmental goals when that's juxtaposed with the known diverse spend as indicated in the recent disparity study. Greater MSP, if you look at the pie chart on the screen, Greater MSP was able to establish industry classifications for 41% of our active vendors. For the remaining 59%, the work group is working closely with civil rights
For the remaining 59%, the work group is working closely with Civil Rights and their continued work with Keen Consulting to attach standardizations to the remaining active vendors. Our ability to do this will not only help to create a baseline, but it will provide a reliable, future system of measurement at the departmental and enterprise levels. Later in this meeting, Velma Corville of Civil Rights will be discussing in greater detail the work group's proposed 30% enterprise-wide goal resolution. Now, secondly, the work group is focused on tool generation. A goal without the creation and dissemination of supports in which to achieve a goal will result in, one, frustration, and, more importantly, the inability to achieve the goal. So with that said, the work group is currently working on a systemized way of forecasting spend by piggybacking and analyzing the forecasting mechanism and response in support of Black Business Week, that is, this week. And we will also be developing tools through our learnings as one of the 10 governments in the City Accelerator cohort. That concludes my brief update. I'll go back to Joy.
Thank you, Danielle.
So I want to talk a little bit about what happens after the strategic needs for housing, public safety, and economic development are adopted through a council. And it's really just around monitoring and reporting. Essentially, the work that's coming out of this REAP is largely elevating existing work that sits inside of departments and helping us isolate and focus. And as a result of that, we're not intending to create new reporting or monitoring mechanisms, but instead leveraging existing mechanisms that are already in place. Specifically, the Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee that was established by this body has a charge through a council resolution to provide regular updates to the community on the city's progress for advancing racial equity. Our office staffs that committee, and we're working with them now on figuring out exactly what that looks like. The Racial Equity Steering Committee, also established by this body through council resolution, has a role to come back and to provide regular updates on the city's racial equity work. Both of these two bodies are, again, existing bodies inside of the city who have a charge through council legislative action to provide updates, and they will continue to do so with the elements of the REAP, as well as the broad racial equity work that the city is doing. In addition to that, we're aware that there are already existing reporting mechanisms. We have a Results Minneapolis process, which is going to likely be informed by this work that's happening in the REAP, as well as existing reporting relationships that departments have within council committee.
Thank you, Ms. Mar Stevens, and to all of the process owners for those presentations. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues, Council President Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I know an enormous amount of work and many, many people's time went into all of this that we're hearing relatively quickly compared to all of that effort. But I do have a few specific questions, and maybe I'll just ask them all and see if it makes more sense for Ms. Mar Stevens to answer or one of the particular individuals we've heard some from so far. The first question was, are we, is the council just approving the goal statements and/or are we approving sort of all of the details related to metrics of urgency and all those other details? Then the second question is, I have some specific questions about metrics of urgency for the first strategic need related to renter stability, and specifically thinking about how we are looking to redo and revise our rental license tiering system and how that will inform the metrics of urgency that have been chosen. Because currently, our tiering system is not particularly related, I would say, to renter stability, but in the future, I think there's lots of opportunity to make it more. So that was kind of the question there. The third question is related to the third strategic need, and this is the last question, which is that it seems to me a little bit different from the other two in terms of its level of specificity, and particularly its focus on youth development. So I just wondered, again, either to you or to Ms. Cotton, with that one, will we also be looking at bigger-picture outcomes related more specifically to public safety, using this as kind of a more specific example, or is the intention really just to focus deeply on youth development through this process?
Chair Jenkins, Council President Bender, I will answer the first question around the process today on adopting of the REAP in the final chapter, and I will defer to Kim Keller on your second question and Sasha Cotton on your third. To your question around the actual action we're asking council to take, the committee as a whole, to take today, is really around saying that the strategic needs that have unidentified are the strategic needs that we're putting, that we're adopting for this final chapter. The other elements that were presented today around goals, or problem statements, or lagging indicators, leading indicators, vital few projects, all of those are provided to provide context, but not necessarily being adopted today, because we do expect that that work will be refined as we move into the implementation phase. We've already seen that happening in some of the other operational areas as they've been implemented. While we're still staying focused on that strategic need, we're allowing the flexibility for the work of staff in relationship with other community partners and council as relevant to adjust as needed.
Good afternoon, through the chair. Thank you for the question, Council President. We do see a real link between the unit's condition and stability. And so having, whether the tiers are a perfect metric right now or not, having that be part of the metrics of urgency, we thought was an important link to establish. In terms of changing the tiers' structure itself, we are actively exploring that through our renter first work, through the inspection study that we are doing in partnership with Family Housing Fund. These are important initiatives that were on that last slide that I said, and the guiding policy, what is the approach we're going to take? How are we going to live our values? And looking at, looking at the tier structure through that lens.
Good afternoon, again. Thank you for the question, Madam President. So I think that for us, the goal is to see a decrease in the number of young people who are experiencing violence, particularly from communities of color and in high-risk communities for violence. We, in the department, specifically in the Office of Violence Prevention, see a deep connection between people who are having high-quality youth development experiences and their likelihood to be involved with violence. And so if we're really trying to do a good job of addressing prevention, we want to stop the violence before it starts and get young people deeply involved in programs that buffer them from those experiences. This is not to negate all of the other work that's happening in our department and across the city that deals in more deep-end issues with young people who are already experiencing the violence. This is just one way to think about how we can engage young people before it even happens, given that the groups seem to want to focus on prevention. Thank you.
Are there any other, Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. I don't necessarily have a question for staff and really appreciate all the work that went into this, and I'm very comfortable approving the higher-level goals that are outlined here. But my question had to do with how we want to manage the work going forward, because certainly when I look at these buckets, one of them's called housing, we have a housing committee, one of them's called public safety, there's a public safety committee, the economic development, one could easily fit into a committee, so that might be a way we could structure it so that some of the work and the metrics and the measuring and the updates could, we could work on it more through our committee structure. And I don't have necessarily a suggestion right here, but I think that that would be a great way that we could embed some of these goals deeper into our institution and get some of that work done. And then it could even come back up to committee the whole and to this committee later as that happens. So let's think about how we can fit that in better. In fact, I'm thinking of the one slide on the housing and all the policy and related work, and it kind of looked a little bit like my committee work plan. So it seemed to me, in a sense, that it might come and we might get involved in some of that work.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there other comments or questions? I do want to be sure that the clerk recognizes Councilmember Ellison joined us in this meeting. And there's no other comments from my colleagues. I just want to make a few comments and offer some words of gratitude and encouragement regarding this historic Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan, or REAP, as it has become known, and just acknowledge it has taken us a while to get here, but I attribute that to the fact that we are and have been intentional about ensuring that there are clear and measurable goals that align with the mission and the values of this body and the city enterprise as a whole. The goals that are equity-focused and address head-on some of the institutional policies built into our system, and that can only be overcome by intentionally reversing those policies. And in a moment in American history where we see the very foundations of our democracy are being shaken by issues that are dictated by race, racism, patriarchy, there are more and more hate groups that have been identified every day. And let us not be deceived or lulled into naivete because we think Minnesota is so progressive. I want you to know that the number of hate groups are growing here, too. It makes you wonder where are the love groups, right? And when are they going to start growing? This work is the resistance, too. It is a continuation of the struggle, of protests, and of collaboration. And I want to thank everyone who has stepped up to be a part of our Racial Action Advisory Committee, Racial Equity Advisory Committee, whom I know will agree with me that this work is not easy, but they recognize its importance. I want to thank my colleagues for all of their contributions and thoughtful support of this work. I am really proud to be a part of this body. Thank you to the city coordinator, Narrea Rivera Vandermeij, to Andrea Larson, to Brian Smith, and all of the department leaders. I really want to thank my own staff, Diva Sadar and Zoe Boujere. And of course, none of this work would be possible if not for Ms. Joy Mar Stevens, Director of the Division of Race and Equity, and her team. Kudos to all. And I just want to acknowledge that while we congratulate ourselves today, we absolutely know that this is only one step. It's a really big, important step, but we must continue to be diligent. We must continue to hold ourselves accountable in each department of the city to make sure that everyone is doing their part to make Minneapolis the most equitable city in America. And so with that, I move to receive and file this update and to approve the three policy priorities. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay, and that item carries. And so, presentation number three, considering that President Gabel is with us, I'm going to skip over items number two for now, and then we will return to that item after we complete items number three and four. And so we have a very special guest with us today. Joan Gabel is the new president of the University of Minnesota, having taken that position earlier this month. She has been invited to our community to introduce herself, and we are thrilled to welcome her. Please join us at the podium. Welcome, President Gabel.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. Thank you, everybody, for having me today. What a wonderful moment to follow, by the way. Good afternoon, and thank you for the warm welcome. The feeling is mutual on behalf of the entire university. I'm incredibly pleased to be with you in this beautiful building, first time in the building. What a wonderful architectural spot this is, and I'm really delighted to have the chance to see it from the inside. I read, as I was getting ready, that the groundbreaking here commenced 130 years ago this year, and that when the clock chime tower was added in 1916, it was heralded as the largest public timepiece in the world, even wider than Big Ben, I understand. So there you go, a learning moment brought to you by the university. I hope it's true. I've also heard, according to legend, that rubbing the big toe of the father of water's sculpture brings good luck. Is this true? All right, well, we'll take care of that on the way out, then. So if they tell me that I'm the first university president to visit like this before, then my predecessors really have missed out, because this is a wonderful opportunity for us to build the relationship and also for me personally to experience this part of town. So friends and colleagues, I'm honored and proud to be the first president to join you at this venue and to be among other firsts at the university and among the elected in this room. In the spirit, I really want to sincerely thank all of you for being here today, with special thanks, of course, to Vice President Jenkins, President Bender, and members of the council for welcoming me here personally and on behalf of the university. And with special thanks to councilmembers Gordon, Fletcher, and Worsame, not to mention, of course, Vice President Jenkins, for their ongoing partnership representing the parts of the Minneapolis campus. We also want to thank all of the department heads and city staff for their work and partnership with the U staff that keep our infrastructure so strong and running so smoothly. It's been one of the best parts of my transition to see how well that partnership works. After all, our footprint is pretty tremendous, and some might call it a city within a city. So this kind of communication and collaboration is critical to our shared success, and we're very, very grateful. So as I begin as president, I want to say that I'm really looking forward to advancing the U within our community as a partnership and making the U more affordable and accessible, leading with openness and transparency, and advancing the world-class discovery and outreach from which we all benefit in a way that is both welcoming and inclusive. So as we work forward and look forward to making that happen, I want to express my appreciation for everything that's happened up to this point, and thank you in advance for the work that we'll do together and for having me here today. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gabel. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing no discussion, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gordon.
That's all right. I just wanted to say how wonderful it is to have you here and congratulations.
Thank you.
And to note how important it is to us, I think, all to have a good working relationship with the University of Minnesota. We consider it an amazing resource to have in so many different ways. There's the jobs, the learning opportunities, the research, and the city reaps the benefits of those time and time again. And we hope the university also values the role that we play in supporting the infrastructure and the housing needs and other opportunities for the university. And speaking for all of us, we really look forward to a deeper partnership, I think, with you moving forward in the future and look forward to working with you for years to come.
Agreed. Thank you very much, sir.
So if there are no other comments other than from Councilmember Fletcher?
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. And let me just extend my welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm a University of Minnesota alum, from the University of Minnesota's top five American Studies program. I'm always very proud of that, and I think you are taking over an institution that is so important to our city and that I think has never fully realized the potential for a partnership with the city, and I hope that we can get there. So I really want to work with you together. I think one of the ways to make college more accessible to everybody is to really solve the affordability problem for housing for students. We can work together on that, and I think the only way we're going to get there is if we work together.
Agreed.
And I think that the university really could be a big, important piece of the economic engine of our city beyond the ways that it's been so far, and I hope that we can figure that out together, so.
I hope so, too. Thank you very much.
Really looking forward to your leadership and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council President Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to take the chance here publicly just to, as well, echo the thanks of my colleagues for you taking the time to come here. And I think we are all so excited about the potential for our future relationship. There are incredible opportunities for co-development and co-creation of land use in our city that's on the university campus, economic opportunities, of course, the resources that you provide for education in our community. I will admit to, in the past, have occasionally referred to the university as a bossy big sister, which I feel comfortable using that analogy because I both M1 and mother-to-one. But the thing about sisters is that they're family, right? We're in this together, and I think that's the spirit that we want to feel with the university, is this true partnership and true co-ownership over the future of this amazing community. So thank you for everything you're about to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. I am one, and I'm mother-to-one as well, so I get that.
Well, with that sisterly analogy in mind, I want to invite the council president to join me in presenting an honorary certificate to President Gabel. Certificate, welcoming Joan T.A. Gabel to the city of Minneapolis as president of the University of Minnesota. And I'm an alum as well, so this is a really proud moment. Whereas Joan T.A. Gabel assumed the office of president of and for the University of Minnesota on July 1st, 2019, becoming the seventeenth person and first woman to hold the high office of distinction in the 168-year history of the university. And whereas President Gabel presides over a system that includes five campuses, serves more than 67,000 students, and encompasses more than 27,000 faculty and staff across the state of Minnesota. And whereas during the three-month interview process, Ms. Gabel traveled extensively in Minnesota to visit each of the university campuses, Morris, Crookston, Duluth, Rochester, and the Twin Cities, meeting with students, staff, and faculty, as well as elected officials and business owners, to learn about the state and its multiple constituencies and communities. And whereas President Gabel has expressed several initial priorities for her tenure at the University of Minnesota, which includes, but not limited to increasing the diversity of the student body and faculty, developing new partnerships, pursuing an array of revenue sources, highlighting the importance of the university's research and expertise, as well as exploring emerging innovations and best practices.
Now, therefore, the mayor and the members of the city council of the city of Minneapolis extend to Joan T.A. Gabel a warm welcome in recognition of her appointment to the distinguished position of the president of the University of Minnesota, one of the premier public research institutes universities in the United States. In token of this esteem, the mayor and the council do hereby present the certificate of welcome, together with our best wishes and sincere support. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll just express my appreciation and say this is just the beginning, and I look forward to working with all of you and seeing what the future holds for us. Thank you very much. I'm very honored.
Thank you. And our next item, we have Race Equity Subcommittee Agenda, which is consideration of a resolution approving an annual goal of 30% of the inclusion of businesses owned by persons of color and women in the city's purchasing and contracting programs. And we will be provided a staff presentation by the city's director of civil rights, Velma Corbell.
I actually surprised myself. I didn't think I'd be able to do that. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Council President, and committee members. My name is Velma Corbell. I am the director in the Minneapolis Department of Civil Rights, and I'm here today to ask for your approval of a resolution to adopt a 30% enterprise spend diversity goal. I feel as though I don't have a whole lot of work to do except to explain what this is, because the setup has already been done. When we're talking about racial equity and economic inclusion, we are talking about exactly the thing that I am here to discuss today. So, I have about three slides. The resolution, of course, is longer than the slide presentation, but I'm happy to answer questions for as long as I need to. I have met with some of you, talked with the Racial Equity Steering Committee, the Racial Equity Community Advisory Group, and also the Supplier Diversity Group, and have the approval of all of those groups to move forward. But I will start by giving you just a little bit of history of the spend diversity goal in the city of Minneapolis. For those of you who can remember, the last time we had a spend diversity goal in the city was when the council adopted an aspirational 25% goal in 2011 and began to implement that goal in 2012. That 25% goal was based on the 2010 disparity study, and it was for the inclusion of women in businesses owned by Black, Indigenous, and people of color. The way we do our goal-setting in the city of Minneapolis, we actually bifurcate that into two goals, one for women and one for businesses owned by people of color. In 2012, those two, that bifurcated goal, was for 13% women business inclusion and 12% for businesses owned by people of color. And again, we were very clear at the time to articulate that that was an aspirational In this present request for 2019 diversity spend goal, this is based on the 2017 disparity study, which we're already about two years into. The goal, again, would be bifurcated when we set goals on our city contracts for 20% women business inclusion and 10% for businesses owned by people of color. As Ms. Shelton Walczek mentioned earlier, we expect this goal is to be meaningful, it to be measurable, and certainly with the proper tools, motivation, that it would be So, how will we accomplish a 30% spend goal in the city of Minneapolis? First of all, we've got some champions, many of them in the room. We have a Supplier Diversity Work Group that's been working on work for business inclusion for about the last, I want to say, two years, but since I've been in the city, we've been talking about it. We've got the Race Equity Division under the leadership of Ms. Marsh Stevens. It's been quite vocal in advocating for this work. We've got our Race Equity Community Advisory Committee, and I spoke with them about this, I believe, on the 17th of this month, and they were excited, first of all, that we engaged with them to talk about the diversity spend goal, but also that the city is taking this very deliberate action to move forward with our equity and inclusion agenda. We have an enterprise race equity steering committee. We also have a committed elected leadership in the mayor and city council, who, to a person, have been very vocal about our need for equity inclusion in the city. And for the departments doing this work, the work didn't just start when we began talking about the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan. Many departments have been working on this for several years, and so I wanted to make sure that this isn't a new ask, this is work that has been ongoing. You can't really achieve a goal, no matter what the number is, without the resources and tools to accomplish it. So, we've just heard earlier in this meeting about the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan. We've talked about the need for economic inclusion, the need to increase the longevity and the number of businesses owned by Black, Indigenous, and people of color. So, of course, there's a direct tie to the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan with this goal request. We are working, as Michelle Walczek mentioned, with Keen Consulting to provide some underpending data to develop some department-specific spend diversity goals. We've also made some technology investments over the last several years that will help us do this. In the procurement department, we are talking about automated bidding and new ways to get vendors registered and to identify the vendors based on their ethnic or racial identification. We've also, as you've heard earlier, set as a priority to develop spend forecasts by departments. We saw a little bit of this in action with the most recent Black Business Week event that we had on Monday night, where we actually have gone out and asked departments to identify procurement opportunities in their respective departments for the next six months, the next year, the next 18 months, and they all did that, which proves it can be done. We just need to create a way so that can be replicated and sustained over time. We have also set as a priority, one of our tools is a vendor feedback loop. We often hear from small businesses owned by women and people of color that the procurement process in the city of Minneapolis is a mystery, and so we have to get better at not just engaging and increasing the numbers of these businesses, but also, and if we're going to provide the assistance to them that will grow and sustain, then we have to be better at communicating with them as well. We've got some other groups and teams in the city that I didn't mention earlier. We've got our business technical assistance providers, we've got our small business team, and there are probably a host of other groups and programs in the city that I am failing to mention by name, but this matters to people in the city. So, I have no doubt that this can be done. So, I will end there and stand for questions.
Thank you, Director Corbell. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate this goal. I guess my question is, how close have we come so far to reach it? As I recall, when we get all the reports, we were having a lot of trouble even getting a 10% for contract compliance, and six, and seven, and 12. So, I think it would be great if we made sure we had a good, clear baseline measure where we're at right now and understand clearly just how far we have to go to reach these goals, too, and maybe make sure we're then quarterly or somehow measuring that trend to see how we go. Do we know what we're starting at?
Madam Chair, committee members, we know in small and underutilized business programs that we're achieving about 20% of the goal on the contracts that we're setting a goal for. And in our general spend, we're achieving about a 6% participation, based on some spend analysis that was done by the innovation team last year, this time. So, it can be done. So, the diversity spend that has occurred with our general spend, not our SUBP, has been done in a pretty organic manner. So, I think with this focus as a starting point, with the tools, with the commitment, I think the 30% is achievable.
So, it's 6% combined for the general spend?
That's correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
So, we've got a ways to go. So, let's get busy.
We can do it.
Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I agree that this is an achievable goal, and I think your assessment about the champions and resources that we have to do so are spot-on, but I do wonder, especially as policymakers to whom most of the departments of the city report, about accountability measures for departments to make sure that we are making active progress toward these goals, of course, also supporting them to do so as well. So, what can you tell us so far about discussions around accountability or things that we might be thinking about in the future as policymakers? I think it's difficult for departments or particular staff to hold, you know, all of the departments of the city accountable, and that's really our job, so that's why I ask.
Madam Chair, Council President Bender, thank you for the question. We have had those discussions at the Supplier Diversity Work Group, as well as at the Racial Equity Steering Committee, and the conversation has really stemmed around setting accountability using sort of three prongs, if you will. First of all, clarity. We have to make the expectations clear to people on what it is we are asking them to do. We've talked about capability of departments to be able to deliver. We need training, information, they need the skills to be able to do that, and the resources within their department. We've also talked about consequences, not as a matter of something negative or as a form of punishment, but consequences can also be coaching, it could be mentoring, it could also be acknowledging the departments that are doing things well and asking them to mentor departments who may be having some difficulty. It's also, we've talked about a process of coming to the steering committee when there does seem to be departments that might be struggling a bit more than other departments. Have we set the metrics just right? So, there is this need for ongoing review to make sure that we've set the expectation in the right place. As I said, I can't think of any department that isn't on board with this, and there's a significant representation and a critical mass of us on the steering committee, who all take this very seriously and are willing to get started on the work.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will move the approval of this resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that item carries. And we will now move to, we will return to item number two on our discussion, which is related to the confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement with Joseph Klein and the University of Minnesota. It says U of M, but I'm assuming, University of Minnesota. Yes. Welcome, Mr. Carl. Welcome back, Mr. Carl.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. As noted, with the approval of Vice President Jenkins, we've added this item to the agenda. The request is for the authorization of a confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement on behalf of the city. Joseph Klein is an elections judge for us. He's also completing his graduate studies at the University of Minnesota, specifically through the U of M's Technological Leadership Institute. And as part of his graduate Catstone project, he inquired if we would be interested in an assessment of our risk exposure through the Elections and Voter Services Division. We assumed that would be a good process for us, but because of the exposure to internal data and the security surrounding elections, we all have agreed that the process should be subject to a non-disclosure agreement. The city attorney's office has been involved in helping us to prepare that non-disclosure agreement, and it is ready for your approval. We would ask for your blessing to have that confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement with Mr. Klein and the U of M approved, so that we can finish that scope of work.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Are there any questions, comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I will move this item for approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that item carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have our reports of committees, and given the length of our meeting and the fact that we have an IGR committee meeting, next, I'm going to ask my colleagues to please be as succinct as possible in committee reports. And we don't have councilmembers Goodman or Ellison, and so I will move to the Elections and Rules Committee, and that report will be given by the vice chair, Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We actually just had this committee meeting, so unless there's any questions, I think we all remember it well. there's any questions, I think we all remember it well.
The next committee report is the Enterprise Committee, given by its chair, Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have two items coming before council at our next council meeting. The first is a social media policy to repeal a prior resolution and replace it with a new city social media policy to be effective January 1 of next year. The second is a workgroup staff direction authored by councilmembers Conno and Goodman. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Chair Palmisano. Our next committee report is the Housing Policy and Development Committee, chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Two items will be coming forward from that. One is the confirming the designation of Tracy Scott as the interim executive director of the Public Housing Authority. And the other is a resolution transferring $180,000 for the 4D Affordable Housing Incentive Program from CPED over to the Health Department for green cost-sharing program expenses.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will return to our Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. And that report will be given by its chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Councilmember Ellison and I were in agenda setting. But we're back.
Thank you.
There will be eight items for approval on, I guess that's actually tomorrow. Item one is liquor license approvals, and two are liquor license renewals. Item three are gambling license approvals, and four are gambling license renewals. Item five is a rental license reinstatement with conditions. Item six are grant applications to deed for IT career pathway strategies. Item seven is a grant application to deed for the redevelopment program. And item number eight is the Upper Harbor Terminal Collective Planning Committee, and this is an appointment to that committee. I do want to take a moment to note that in committee next Tuesday, there'll be an honorary resolution honoring Chuck Lutz, followed by a couple of comments, and then a reception at Crown Roller Mill at 3:00, give or take. Mr. Lutz did not want the full hoopla of the council meeting, so we recreated the council meeting and the committee meeting to get around his resistance. So it would be great if you're around and able to come to committee on Tuesday at 1:30 for the presentation, or if you can't do that, to come to the reception at 3:00 at Crown Roller Mill. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Are there any questions? Seeing none, the next committee report is the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, given by the vice chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee is bringing forward three items for consideration. One is authorizing a contract with Sumaya Hassan in the amount of $3,000 for youth violence prevention. The other is accepting an increase of $700 in reimbursement funds from Washburn Center for Children to cover professional services. And the third is approving some appointments to the Workplace Advisory Committee. I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. The next committee report is the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, given by Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee brings two items forward. One is a contract with the, excuse me, authorizing a contract with the John Gore Theatrical Group, Inc., for bomb detection at the Orpheum State and Pantages Theaters. And item number two is authorizing a contract with the University of Minnesota Veterinary Medical Center for Police Canine Health Services. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, the Committee Transportation and Public Works Committee. And that report will be given by Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. The Transportation and Public Work Committee is bringing forward 15 items this week. The first is the Snow and Ice Removal Public Sidewalks Assessments. That'll include three amendments based on negotiations staffed with property owners around the time of the public hearing. Item number two is Minneapolis Stormwater Management Program, an annual report, authorizing the submittal of that to the MPCA. Item number three is a land sale at 620 Olson Memorial Highway. Item number four is a request for proposals for the parking mobile device payment system. Item number five is a request for proposals for the Municipal Solid Waste Transfer Station. Item number six is authorizing an increase to the contract for the Fridley Softening Plant. Item number seven is a grant from MPCA for electric vehicle charging stations. Item number eight is receiving and spending some money from DOT for the 10th Avenue Southeast Bridge Rehab Project. Item number nine is a cooperative construction agreement with MinDOT for our stormwater storage facility. Item number 10 is in agreement with Park Board for sidewalk construction in North Commons Park. And items 11 through 15 are accepting bids for various public works projects. Happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, we will hear once again from Councilmember Fletcher with the Ways and Means Committee Report.
Thanks again, Vice President Jenkins. The first two items of Ways and Means are legal settlements. Item number three is a contract amendment for MP's Second Precinct Air Handler Unit Replacement Project. Item number four is a third contract amendment for the East Side Storage and Maintenance Facility Project. Item number five is our Quarterly Domination Report. Item number six is the Integrated Mobility Innovation Demonstration Research Program Grant, writing a letter of support for the submission of that. And item number seven is authorizing the procurement process and authorizing issuance of an RFP for master leasing services for the Hayawatha Facility Campus Expansion. Again, happy to stand for questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, our last committee report is the Executive Committee, and that will be given by the vice chair, Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had one item on the executive committee agenda this cycle, which was a collective bargaining agreement with the Building Trades Unit.
Thank you, Madam President. Are there any questions? Seeing no further business before this committee, we are adjourned.